Good evening, welcome to the Executive Board of Selectment Meeting. The meeting is being audio and video recorded. If you please stand and trust the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as far off.
All right, the first item on the agenda is to go into executive session. I would introduce a motion to enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. Specifically, all unions overseen by the Board of Selectmen, in my opinion, as chair, strategizing in open session would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town. The board will reconvene into open session at the conclusion of executive session. Motion.
So moved. Second.
And those in favor, roll call.
Yanderson, yes? Raise your hand.
Yes, right now we're in executive session. Six forty-five, public hearing. A joint petition of Massachusetts Electric Company and Verizon to install one new pole at 352 Center Street. Do you want us to open public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are you, if you just want to quickly brief us on where the polls going?
Sure, yeah, so the pole is going to be in line in West Center Street. Location between the two existing poles is just to serve some EV charging going in the supermarket, inside the supermarket, in that parking lot area over here. So, but the pole is right here.
Electric field.
It's. Pretty simple, just an addition, an extra pole, that's basically what it is.
Any questions, gentlemen?
No.
Public hearing, is there anyone in the public who might just speak? All right, is our motion closed, public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
And is there a motion to approve the installation?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we have review and vote on recommendations for the FY '24 budget. David has a briefing for us with his recommendations. David, you just want to go through your summary.
Yep, no, thank you. I'm going to start off by saying that in ten years, this was probably the most difficult budget that I was able to work on. First is that all the budgets are due at the end of January, and so union settlements have not been done, contracts have not been done with department heads. And also because of our, the coordination or the assimilation that we did into the inspectional services budget, we had to then move some people around and play a shell game. So it's been a lot of work, it was pretty tedious. In the end, we believe that we have come to terms on our union agreements. And as a result, I have listed what those impacts are to those four respective departments. The fire department also requested three additional firefighters as part of their staffing. I can't fund it, obviously if you want to go over two and a half, we can, but I can't fund the full three. So as a result, I'm going to recommend that we fund two. I did speak to the fire chief today, I had a conversation with him, he understands, no issues from his standpoint. It is important to know that town side, there is no additional hiring except for those firefighters. And for informational purposes, it does look like the school is going to add about six people on their side. Next page is, is that I want to let you know that what I am presenting does provide, requires a full two and a half percent raise over last year's tax levy. And what the actual drivers are is follows. The requests originally was about $2.6 million year over year. The major drivers, after my adjustments, will be as follows. Is about a $915,000 increase in the local school, a $577,000 increase in the benefits budget, and a $232,000 increase in the fire, really because we're hiring two additional people, which means that the entire town side budget discretionary and non-discretionary excluding water will be up about a little over six percent. Again, as an FYI, I bullet pointed this, I want to let you know that I, to the best of my ability, I reflected all of the additional contractual raises that we believe that we were going to approve. I was doing them from till about midnight the last two nights, so I may have missed one, but I think overall we got them pretty good. Finance committee is fully funded, in case again we have any issues going forward. I am noting to the board that this is the largest increase that the town set has had since I've been here, and I am informing you that you are not sustainable at a six and a half or six and a quarter increase year over year. You just, you cannot, if, you're not going to be able to sustain that. The school budget, I had a conversation with the school superintendent earlier yesterday, earlier today. It's not an easy conversation to have because I feel bad. I've always used this methodology, this is my tenth budget putting together. The last two years, we did not make any adjustments to the school budget. The previous year, we had made some adjustments and then went back to town meeting to readjust it, that was the COVID year. But prior to that, what my methodology had always been was this, was to try to be fair. Was I took the town side operating increase budget of discretionary budgets. So I exclude the water department because that is not on the tax side, no sense in including water. And I also excluded debt because town meeting has already approved all debt that is non-discretionary and things such as benefits, retirement benefits that come from the state. We pay on the town side all pensions. So now I've broken out bike department, we pay all pensions. In this year, because the tables that they had put together, they did a 12% increase on that one line. In that one line is $3 million. So a 12% increase is $350,000, $400,000 just in that one line. Nothing I could do about it, it is what it is. So what I did was I took all of the town operational budgets, and I came out and it turned out that our operational budgets were up 5.96%. So then what I had done in the past was I went to the school side and I increased the school department by 6%, which came out to $915,000. And I note in here as follows. I totally respect the fact that the school is facing some financial pressures. But an 8% budget increase this year will have long-term detrimental impacts if we continue to fund at that rate, especially since it will be compounded over time with future increases. I also further note that right now, not included in that 8% increase is $175,000 being used as federal ESER funds, which obviously is needed and we're glad that we have it. But no doubt in about two years, and it's estimated, could be a year, could be three, but somewhere around in two years, those federal ESER funds will no longer be available. And that means the towns could have to make up for that. So just doing math, you know, an 8% increase really would be more than that if we had to back up, if we had to cover, which we're going to have to cover in the future, assuming that those are still needed in the future. I did note however, because I want the board to be aware and everybody watching this, is that we do have the ability to fund the full increase. I've done the math, and if you want to raise at three and a half percent instead of two and a half percent, we have that ability to do it. We're fortunate. In most towns, they raise to two and a half percent because we always say prop two and a half, you get two and a half percent raise. Most towns have done that. But West Bridgewater with a 35% commercial base, we've been very good over the past handful of years where we have very rarely raised all the way at the two and a half percent. What that does is that creates excess capacity. So under normal situations, in order to go over two and a half in one year, you have to go for an operational override, which means you get a two-thirds vote at town meeting and then we go to a referendum vote. We don't have to do that. You simply could pass a budget, pass the entire school budget, and then in November, when we set the tax rate, we would be raising at three and a half percent. Next page, if we can get it. I want to go over this because I understand and recognize why this looks, why this is difficult to sometimes follow. So far, the governor's budget has only been released, House Ways and Means has not been released yet. It should have been, but it hasn't been, but hey, it is what it is. And in the governor's budget, they are increasing state aid at $1.2 million to the town. 1.2 million of it is classified under Chapter 70. The town's only receiving 44 grand. So when, if we were to say all of Chapter 70 goes to the school, we'll cover that. We have more than a $44,000 increase in our budget. Heck, on page one, the police department up alone is 52,000. The state's charging me $4,000 just in pensions, year over year. So what the state has done, is the state, and I've requested this chart from the state, and I've not received it back yet, but they have shown, and I was briefed last week, that from 1992, I believe was the initial date, to current date, is that the towns have released just about the same amount of state aid. The chart actually dips down like a curve and comes back up. So the increase in the last couple of years is positive. Thank you to Governor Baker because he made that commitment when elected, and thank you to Governor Healey because she's continued it. But it dipped. And Chapter 70 has continued to go up. And what the legislature has actually done is that they said, we're going to give you aid and we're going to classify into this, we're going to classify in this, but it's technically still town aid. Now our increase, which is substantial this year, is because the state, for the first time for West Bridgewater, is fully funding the Student Opportunities Act in West Bridgewater. And the school committee made part of their presentation about some of the metrics that we now hit, which is all accurate, including population increase. So that's one of the reasons that we're receiving it. But that doesn't mean we're going to receive it year after year after year. They are fully funding it for this year. But at the end of the day, if Chapter 70 was meant to just be a school receipt, it would go to the school. And I know that because school choice is meant to be a school receipt, so it goes straight to the school. This is aid going to each municipality to say, this is your aid to help you fund your operations. Now, most of it is being used to go to the school, but we don't take the money in and like pigeonhole it in a bucket. It's just a receipt, you know, it doesn't really get tagged as such. Now, that is not the only item that we refer to. We look at the tax side, we talked about that, we talk about the state aid, we now look at receipts. Here are three years of actual receipts, in FY '20 high, '21 low, '22 high, '23 we budget a little bit lower. We're on pace to hit that number. But this is a highly variable number. More than half of what's in that number is excise tax. So when people buy cars, we go up. As those cars start to age, we come down. It's based on the valuation of the car, and obviously the car is worth more date year one. And we have no control over that. So I always have to be a little bit conservative on receipts. And as I put in my example in FY '21, had I actually budgeted to FY '20 receipts, we would have had a $400,000 deficit. Not lost $400,000, we would have had $400,000 less, we would have had to make cuts. Fire people, lay people off, shut down buildings, whatever, we just didn't have the money. Fortunately, we didn't do that, so we have to be a little bit conservative. But if somebody said to me, you're the board, you said, Dave, add more money to the receipts to 3.4, we can cover the school, but it's dangerous because I can't guarantee you that we're going to have that money. But what I did do is this, next page, was that I did add, nope, another one, thank you. What I did do is in line three, is I added $188,000 to receipts. So even though we estimated a 2.8 million, I'm now going to use just under 3.1 million in order to balance. So I've added some because I'm trying to balance, but that's balancing after I cut. So what does this page tell you? What this page tells you is that a 6.17% year-over-year increase in using the full 2.5% tax levy and transferring $350,000 from free cash, which we've always done, I balance. If you want to make up any of the cuts that I made, you have some choices you have to make. You have to tax more, or you have to pull more money from free cash. One item I want to show you, I forgot this, we'll blow it up. Last year, I have always, since I have been here, we have always transferred the initial $350,000 to offset the school debt. But last year, we transferred another $350,000 from free cash to balance. And I remembered saying after I looked at my notes, that I said last year, you can't keep on doing this. Free cash is one-time money that comes in, and you can't always guarantee it. And we've used it to fund capital projects and to do sidewalks. And this here, I liken this to overtime. You work a 40-hour work week, you structure your expenses to your 40-hour work week. You start working 50 hours, you get overtime, this is our overtime. But you start putting your expenses to your overtime, one day the overtime leaves, you're in trouble. We will not always be able to generate free cash, but we did it last year. And doing it last year has compounded this year. Because that's why we need more than the two and a half to be able to fund all of our operations. So it's like living on a credit card. Sooner or later, you just can't keep on living on the extra. The last item I want to make note of is growth. We have had growth in town which helps with additional receipts. But look at the trend, and these are not estimates, these are actual certified numbers from the Department of Revenue. So this year, I'm using the $413,000, I'm assuming flat year over year, to this past fiscal year. So you see up here where it says increase in growth, it says zero. Because I'm using, what I, I'm hoping to generate the same amount of growth this year as I did last year. But you can see that the trend is going against us. And if the market continues to soften in areas, I think we can all understand why. So the truth of the matter is, I feel bad having to make this presentation, but it's numbers. And this is my recommendation, I don't like it, I didn't just pull it from the sky, I didn't just make it up, I'm not trying to hurt anyone, I would love to give the school the full amount, I would love to hire the third firefighter because I think we need to. The other little budgets that I cut here and there, I'd like to be able to put those monies back in as well. I just couldn't in balance. Unless you tell me, transfer from free cash, tax more, those are really basically your options. And then if you want, I know there might be questions about this, I'll answer them. And if not, then what I did was I created a sheet to show you every single budget one more. You know, this is what, every single budget, you can see, it's almost never like this, but almost every single budget I had to adjust depending on what came in, what came out. And then the next sheet shows all the adjustments I actually made. This is usually three or four lines. This is 65, 70% of our budgets. But I had to make all of these adjustments to reflect everything that was going on. So it's pretty tedious, I think, you know, 98% if I got it right. Anyway, whatever questions you may have.
Are there any questions on this, because we want to go to the line.
The $350,000 that's transferred each year.
Yep.
You're considering that a school expense? Didn't the town vote to build that new high school?
Yep, so my first year that I was here was the first year that the school debt hit. And those conversations at the finance committee of which you were on, that said, what can we do to help to offset that debt? So we made a decision at that point that every single year that we generated free cash, the first $350,000 we would automatically transfer. Meaning that if we generated 4,000, we only had 50 grand to spend. Because $350,000 would be transferred to offset that debt. We've done that every single year. Now again, I only make recommendations. So if people would rather not transfer against, all you're going to do is you'll just raise your levy.
I think that impact to the taxpayer was about $200 a year on the average household if we didn't transfer that.
That could be.
If I remember right, that was the discussion, that's what everyone was looking at.
So as soon as free cash gets certified, the first thing I do is I move $350,000 on my ledger over to know. If like, if you called me and it was, free cash was $1,350,000 and you said, hey, how much free cash do we have available? I'd tell you a million, I'd tell you the whole story, but I would tell you based on the culture, we have a million dollars to spend. But you're entirely right, you don't have to do that.
So really, the taxpayers have an option. They could take that and fund the school if they wanted to. To fund the school's budget.
So the initial $350,000 is being used, excuse me. I'm using $350,000 to balance right now. But last year, we used an additional $350,000. So right now, it was $271,000 reduced from the school budget. So you are correct, we could take an additional $271,000 from free cash. It's available, usually, because I was hoping this year we could do more in sidewalks, but if you had said, no, instead of doing the sidewalks, let's put the $271,000 in here, fund the school at the full amount, it will not affect the tax rate, you can do that, you have that flexibility. But you are compounding the problem for the second year in a row, you're not always going to have that free cash. But it is an option, and that's why I disclosed it earlier, it is an option if you want to do it.
So in other words, if we keep going at these ratios, and we keep raising the same amount of free cash, eventually we're going to get to the point where we have no free cash to offset the school debt and we have no free cash for sidewalks.
The expectation is.
At this growth rate.
Correct, if the growth rate continues to come down, plateau, decrease, whatever happens, our receipts do not come in higher, our free cash will no longer be as generous in the future. And then you'll be in trouble. And as I said to the school superintendent earlier, when I balance a budget, although I am looking at today's budget, I am doing some forecasting in my analysis. We do have excess capacity, that's why you can raise it to three and a half percent. But I'm also wary of the fact that in three, four, five years, we are going to continue to wean off of school choice. And I think most people understand why, and we understand why we need to do that. But that's a million and a half dollars that the school counts on today, that will no longer be available. And we are going to have to find that 1.5 million dollars in this budget. You can see, we don't have an extra 1.5 million. We are going to have to raise taxes to cover that at that point, you will just have to. And if, it was a second, and so if we continuously borrow from free cash now, that will compound the problem at a future date. It doesn't mean it's not available, I'm just letting you know, it does put you, it puts you behind. It's like living on your savings. You have money in your savings, every single month you dig into savings to pay your bills. You can do it, but it's not sustainable because sooner or later, savings dries up.
So can we just clarify for everyone listening to this, because I know residents thought this was an important meeting, excess capacity, that's a really nice way of saying we're going to tax you more.
Excess capacity right now means that we have the ability to tax you more, yes.
That's all it is.
Right.
It's not a little fun sitting somewhere with excess capacity. It's our ability to say, your tax bill is going to be more, and here's why.
Yes.
Do your growth figures, and does that include all of the new buildings going on in town, specifically Skollman Street?
So FY '23 includes some of them, but not all of them, because it's after the permits have got completed. So hopefully, Skollman Street, we are going to see some incremental increase from there. But that doesn't mean that all the other stuff that we received, like, you know, some of the other subdivisions aren't going to get built or whatever. The hope is, is that we have a couple of warehouses going in, that should generate good income going forward. And as we get more residential, that's going to generate some income going forward as well. But residential also costs more money, there's services that have to be provided. It's one reason why I like the warehouses. I grant you, they're not perfect. There's reasons why not to like them. But warehouses, for the most part, do not consume services or put kids into schools and pay the highest amount of taxes. So hopefully, if those come on, maybe we can reverse this trend, but that's a guessing game. And remember, they also have to be rented. You know, you're going to get the incremental tax revenue, but if they're not rented, I'm not going to get the personal property tax on it. And there is some softness in that commercial market, we'll see how the future progresses on that.
You had mentioned speaking with the fire department chief and that he was okay with the changes. Was the school department also okay with the change?
I would say no. I mean, the truth of the matter is, we had a very professional conversation, I mean, we just talked. I mean, Mark's not, I don't think he hates me, I don't hate him. It's just, it was just math, but you know, I told him at the meeting tonight, and he was able to come and obviously can speak. And, but, I don't know, I mean, I don't think you said yay. And I took it as such.
If I may, it's just part of the job, us being here supporting who feels best for our kids and staff.
I think one of the other things we really haven't talked about is what's happening out in the credit markets. That interest rates are rising, ability to borrow is starting to tighten up. May 11th, all the emergency orders that have been blocking foreclosures, it's terminated. So any foreclosures that were in a stay position are going to move forward now, and the pace is picking up.
I do find what you propose to be fair and reasonable, I mean, I know the school's here to advocate on their behalf for their department, which is applaudable in their job, but our job, I think, is to present a fair and reasonable budget to all departments and to taxpayers. And I'm comfortable with this, I do think it's fair, but if the school would like to, you know, I don't want to debate, but if you wanted a couple minutes, glad to extend you that courtesy.
So I think, I want to echo what Mr. Waddle said, that the budget that was built by him and Mrs. Grant reflects the needs of the students. We thoroughly reviewed the budget, and as the responsible body for the school department, we voted to approve that budget. And under mass general law, that is the budget that we are recommending to the taxpayers. If the taxpayers would like to reduce that, then that is fine, but this is what we need for our students. And I know there's been a lot of debate about PPE, we don't look at PPE. We're showing that as a metric compared to, because in the past, West Bridgewater has been compared to other towns around us that we have no business being compared to. Easton, we can't compare ourselves to Easton. Even Bridgewater, it's a much larger district, we can't compare ourselves to that. So we've used PPE to show what we're spending compared to other districts. I know there's some debate with that number, but the bottom line is that we voted unanimously to pass this budget. That includes the increase in Chapter 70. And to correct something that you said, Mr. Gagne, we will be held harmless on Chapter 70, so it will not decrease next year. We may not receive a nickel more, but we will receive the same amount. And Chapter 70 is earmarked for education, and so to recommend cuts to our budget will only have a detrimental impact on our students.
So the only thing I would say is, look, I fully, I'm not going to argue about the needs because I'm sure that they're necessary. When Mark and I talked, we never even discussed that, you know, because I just trust you guys. The only thing I would say is, is that when we enter into a recession, and this isn't a guess, we can look at history, is that in 2011, 2012, 2013, Governor Deval Patrick did what they call nine C cuts. And nine C cuts was in the middle of the year, reduced aid to towns. Now, I hope that doesn't happen. All I'm saying is, is that all aid, whether it's Chapter 70, or local aid, or whatever, he or she has that unilateral ability without legislative approval to do what they call is a nine C cut. And the reason that's so important is because when Deval Patrick cut is $100,000 in 2012, we're halfway through the season. You already set your budget, and they all just cut it because the state had a cut. Now, in fairness, the state should be fresh with a lot of money right now, thanks to money pouring in from the feds. So my only point is, is that Ms. Dragonity is entirely correct, we should be held harmless. But the day is going to come that the federal government cannot continue to borrow a trillion dollars a year to give it to everybody else, that tree will end one day. And I don't know when that ends, but it will end. In the short term, we should be okay, she's entirely correct. But I know in the short term, we're still looking at $1.5 million, eventually we're going to make up with the school choice. That's going to happen. So, but she's entirely correct, next year, we should receive a similar amount in state aid for Chapter 70 funds.
And if I may, just, we are in year three of the six of Student Opportunity Act, so if that continues to be funded with its intent of being fully funded over the six years, that should increase. Obviously, it should because there are no guarantees, but we are halfway through full implementation. With the needs of our students changing, we're hoping that the amounts will continue to remain similar, but we have no guarantees on that. But we know that they are moving towards continuing to fully fund that student opportunity. But we know that they are moving towards continuing to fully fund that Student Opportunity Act.
Can I ask a question about Chapter Seventy? You said to be held harmless, what does that mean? Does that mean we're, we're going to get the same amount of money next year?
Yes.
Six point five million dollars.
So if they're going to fund Chapter Seventy with the same, so does that mean when we started the kindergarten program, they came in, you, the school committee presented to the finance committee, they talked about starting, um, full-pay kindergarten, and the state was gonna pay for it, was that through Chapter Seventy money?
Yep.
And they talked about how it was going to pay for itself in the future.
Yep, so that's-
So we've continued to be paid for that through the Chapter Seventy money. And it sounds like what they're saying is the exact same thing.
Yep, so, I don't know what the analysis is, but to high level, you're entirely correct. Um, we had a part-time pre-K, which students, which parents paid for. So we went to full-time pre-K, we lost that- kindergarten, so sorry. Um, we lost that revenue, I don't know what that revenue was, but we lost that revenue. Because they were now full-time, they come towards our population, so as part of Chapter Seventy, or the, um, the state aid, we increased revenue. What the net is between those two, I can't tell you. But yes, this did go up, this did come down, there's a lot of focus on this, there's less focus on this.
Right.
But, there may have been a positive impact, I'm not saying there wasn't, but I never saw analysis to that.
So if they're coming, well, I, I just wanna make the statement that they've come in, they've asked for a specific amount of money, um, and the issues that they've mentioned, and the reason they need the money, I've personally seen, just from my own interactions, um, in town, so I am in support of the full school committee budget.
That's fine, I mean, look, my job is this. My job is to provide you a balanced budget with some recommendations on how to get there, and I've never been directed to raise more than two and a half percent. So using all the tools available to me, I'm just presenting a balanced budget. Again, I sit up front. Authorized me to transfer two hundred and seventy one thousand dollars more from free cash, we're done. Authorized to go to three and a half percent, we're done. Um, authorized that we go up in receipts, which I think is the most dangerous out of the three, but we're okay. You know, it's, but my job is just to present to you the numbers with all, with, working within the, the tools that are at my, at my disposal.
Other than the one point two million from Plymouth County to fund water, the treatment facility, what else have we received for grants? Have we, is there anything in the pipeline that we know we're going to get?
So one point two million dollars is the ARPA funds?
Correct.
Um, and yes, you intermarked that for the water treatment plant, which is one of your warrant articles. Um, but, mm, I, I mean, usually grants are something specific. For example, the fire department writes a grant, and they get new equipment.
Right.
Forty, fifty thousand dollars, uh, or so, but there's no other, we don't have a general grant that could be used for all general purposes.
Are there any state funding being talked about that we might get? For the water treatment plant, I haven't heard of anything, just wanted to see if you've heard of anything, because you'd be closer to it than I am.
Um, nothing definitive, no. The only thing that could change these numbers, to my knowledge, um, is if the House Ways and Means Committee increases any of the numbers from the governor. Now, they did do that last year. The House Ways and Means Budget actually fund, gave more local aid than what the governor did. But I think it was like twenty grand, you know, it wasn't two hundred and seventy one thousand, but it was a few dollars more. Um, so these numbers from the state are not entirely final, um, but I, I'd say that ninety-eight percent final.
Okay, do you have any other comments? And like I said, I'm comfortable with the recommended budget in front of us.
So, uh, have we taken a vote?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a motion?
So I would make a motion to accept the budgets as recommended.
Um, I'll second, assuming you're not gonna. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed?
Opposed.
All right, um, moving on to warrant articles.
And if I may just once say one thing, um, the, um, finance committee's budget is the one that is presented at town meeting. And their meeting is tomorrow, and I know I had that conversation with you, but I didn't want to say it, not say it, since you and I talked about it last night.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Um, David, do you wanna just quickly? Touch on each?
So Article One, Two, Three is, um, is, is same articles every single year. Article Four is your budget, which is what you just approved, uh, voted on. Article Five is for the assessing, um, abatements. Article Six is to receive Chapter Ninety funds in. Article Seven, and Article Eight is for CPC. Article Seven is, is just receiving the money in from the state, and Article Eight is just paying the debt on Friendship Park, as you know, there's no new CPC articles. Article Nine is to place money into OPEB, other, other post-employment benefits. We usually take some money out of free cash for that. Article Ten is for the Web Task Force, which is a match, um, for the West Bridgewater, East Bridgewater, Bridgewater Police Task Force. Article Eleven, um, is from the school, as you know, they have a special education stabilization fund. Um, I have not done my due diligence on this, 'cause it just came in, uh, well, came in on time, but I just reviewed it. Um, I have to do my due diligence, but that, what they wanna do is they say that they have some funds left over um, in other outstanding capital budget warrant articles that were not used, and they wanna transfer that into the Special Education Stabilization Fund. In theory, it doesn't sound like it's, but in fact, that sounds like a good idea, I just don't know anything more about it yet. Um, Article Twelve is to continue your investment into sidewalks. Article Three is our Uber Lyft fund that comes from the state, we usually put those into sidewalks, that's usually twelve or thirteen hundred dollars, not a lot of money. Um, and then Article Fourteen is new this year. What we'd be looking at, and this was in a conversation that I had with Murray, is that, uh, we would like to start to try to get on the TIPS program going forward, but they are always looking for projects that are TIPS-ready, meaning that you already have the engineering done. And so what we'd be hoping to do is to place some money into this fund this year, so if the board says, hey, we really wanna do this, you'll engineer for it, and then apply for a grant, and be prepared and ready. So, you know, based on that conversation, I placed that on.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, Article Fifteen will start your capital budget items. A copy machine for the town clerk's office, a vehicle for the building inspector is sixteen. Seventeen is for a stump grinder, a DPW. Eighteen is for a new air compressor. Art- Article Nineteen is for new lights in the, um, uh, Public Works Building. Article Twenty is for new heaters in that same building. Article Twenty-One is for a police cruiser. Article Twenty-Two is for a new vehicle at the fire department for the fire chief. Article Twenty-Three is for a new fire truck. Article Twenty-Four is for a new copier at the, uh, Council on Aging. Article Twenty-Five is for new carpet and flooring at the Council on Aging. Article Twenty-Six is for touch view panels at the school department. All of these that are on here, with one exception, were all unanimously approved for recommendation at the Capital Budget Committee. Um, Article Twenty-Seven is for a new dump truck at the water department. Article Twenty-Eight is for a new water treatment plant. Article Twenty-Nine is a change in our bylaw for elected officials, that if you're a full-time paid employee, that you would not be able to serve as a selectman or on the board or committee that you are affiliated with. So for example, if you were a library employee, you could not run for selectman or for library trustee, but you could run for school committee.
Any capital requests that aren't on here?
Um, mm, no. Am I missing one?
Um, no, I think we have, we said yes to all the votes.
That's correct, there was, the, the building inspector one, that was a majority vote.
Right.
Uh, but all the other ones were unanimous.
They were unanimous.
And the only one that was originally on there that is not in front of you was for a second water treatment plant. However, the water department pulled that, so, um, it was not-
Oh, that's, they didn't, the ten million dollar one?
That is correct, so the four million dollar one is on here.
I thought it was the opposite, I thought the ten million was staying, and the four million was coming off.
I'll get, I'll get clarification, but that was my understanding, maybe, maybe you're right.
Okay.
And is this bylaw different than what we had looked at previously? Did we look at this previously?
I, did we, I think-
I, you would, I know I saw it, uh, through email, I asked you for it.
I saw it through email, but I don't know.
Okay, all right, and I sent it. So we tweaked some of the language, 'cause originally, it was going to be, you could not run for any elected board.
Yeah, that's what-
Um, and then after consultation with Anthony and the bylaw study committee members, it was thought that to provide a little bit more flexibility to that person.
Right, I was not in favor of it how it was originally presented, I think that, if you're, like David's example, if you're on the, if you work for the library, you should be able to still run for the water department or whatever, yeah. Just not, you know, someone that oversees it.
I think you're behind that.
So, I'm opposed to Article Sixteen, I'd like that to be removed. We've put- Article Sixteen is for the building commissioner to purchase a new Ford Explorer four-by-four vehicle. Historically, what we've done is retired police cruisers have been used for the building, um, commissioner, and I don't see any reason why we shouldn't continue that practice, it saves the taxpayers money. It's still a great vehicle, there's nothing wrong with the vehicle. I don't think the repairs have been astronomical. I don't see why we have to start a practice of buying a vehicle for the building department.
I don't disagree with that train of thought, um, I assume typically, there's a police cruiser that comes offline every year?
I know we talked about this at the Capital Budget Committee, was it that they were all sedans, and they didn't have SUVs?
That's correct.
They didn't have a vehicle in the short-term future that would be available.
But they're, he, they are, they're going to retire one, aren't they?
So right now, they're gonna retire a sedan.
Okay.
And part of Mark, a part of Mike's, um, concern or argument is that sometimes he is not always on pavement, especially with new development, in that because he is in mud, or he's off-road, that he wants something a little bit higher off the ground, um, and so that's why he wanted to go from a car to an SUV. And as part of that discussion at Capital Budget, was, well, maybe we just wait for an SUV from a police department to come off, and repurpose that. And again, I'm not necessarily against it. The only thing I will say is that Capital Budget, I will say here, I supported it, um, because part of my job as town administrator is to also advocate for our department heads. And through the years, we have bought a brand-new vehicle for our DPW department, the DPW director, our assistant director, our police chief, currently, it's now went on for the fire chief, for our water superintendent, and for whatever reason, the culture is, we buy a new one for those other department heads, but for him, he always gets the hand we town. So, if the town wants to continue that culture, oh, that's, that's fine. Um, but I did take the position to support Mike on this, only because, like, we have a culture in town, um, that I thought that wasn't, you know, I- if we're gonna buy a new vehicle for the others, then I thought that we should do it for him as well, if we're going to buy a vehicle.
So, personally, I'm not in favor of the culture, it's, it's not my money I'm spending, it's taxpayer money. And while, i- it's a, it's a nice to have. I, where, where is the building inspector going that he's driving through mud? I mean, he's mostly inspecting buildings.
He made it sound like he was going out to construction sites, that, that he was going to be on-site and needed a truck, that it was difficult for the sedan.
For what, and this was, I mean, he's doing mostly inspecting finished buildings.
No, no, because he has to do roughing, so for example, um, once a week, I get out in town. This budget season, eh, maybe not once a week, but most of the year, I get out once in town, 'cause I just wanna see what's going on. So for example, Scotland Street. I refuse to go down Scotland Street, I was in my car, because during the construction of Scotland Street, some buildings were roughed in, I probably would've gotten stuck, 'cause that was all, that hadn't been paved yet. So, um, you know, again, I could see, no, that might be five percent of the time, that's certainly not the majority of the time. And the argument could be made, he could've stayed on Maple Street Extension and walked. I'm not saying that that's not possible, 'cause that's what I did. Um, but, I will say there are times during new construction that is not always a paved road, and if it does rain, it does get muddy, there is a chance that a explorer would handle that terrain better than a car.
And I'm sure there are those times, but I, I don't think they're frequent, I mean, we just talked about three firemen versus two. If you look at the statistics, I mean, I don't have the numbers I requested yet, but it was already agreed upon for two. I am, there's no doubt in my mind, there are times when that station's left empty. I trust Lincoln a hundred percent in his judgment, but it's not every day. It does happen, but we have alternatives. I would, I'm more inclined for public safety than worrying about mud. And again, I don't think the practice of buying everyone a vehicle with taxpayer money, I, I don't, I don't particularly care for the practice. And in this instance, this has always worked, we've passed on the retired vehicle. There's ne- I've never hea- and, someone correct me if I'm wrong, but I've never heard of an instance that the building inspector was unable to perform his job because of the vehicle we provide.
Yep.
I do agree with that, that, I mean, although it may not be treating everyone equally in that sense, but for obvious reasons, the police chief and the fire chief need, you know, more reliable vehicles to respond to emergencies. I mean, I think that's obvious. I know, I believe the previous highway superintendent had a retired vehicle at one point, right, did London?
He did.
The ground vic, right?
He did.
So I mean, I don't know, maybe we made a mistake buying, maybe the DPW director didn't need a truck. I think, probably uses the truck enough to justify it, but, I don't, I do agree with this.
I also had the mindset that Mike comes to us and asks every year for something, and it's been a lot of years that we've said no to him. So there was that piece as well, that we don't wanna keep shutting him down, that we wanna encourage him to be the department head, and to have the confidence he needs when he goes out there and does his job.
So I'll make a motion to remove Article Sixteen from the warrant.
Well, if we leave it on, then it leads it up to the taxpayers, right?
But we have the right to take it off, and I don't even wanna ask the taxpayers to fund it.
Um, I'll second it. Any further discussion? No, now, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Okay. Um, oh, so we do need to vote, I guess, for all the other ones, too, are there any others that anyone wants to discuss? Or is there a motion to, um, place all the re- remaining on the warrant?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, um, approve the meeting minutes of January eleventh, January twenty-fifth, February first?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Except for review, the meeting minutes of February fifteenth, March first to March fifteenth.
Yes, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, we have a list of antique and second-hand license renewals, um, is there a motion to approve all those pending any outstanding, um, items that the office has in inspections?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, except for review for three oh seven, um, self-made, um, proposed storage facility, at least. David, do you wanna just very briefly touch on it?
Sure, I mean, there wasn't a prof- a narrative provided to me from the developer. Um, however, what it does look like is that they're looking to add a contractor's yard on South Main Street. I think this is a tough one. Um, you know, I, I, I strongly believe in, in property rights, but there is a, quite a bit of residential in that area. Now, it is zoned for it, so it isn't allowed use, I would have to go for the ZBA to get a special permit. Um, um, basically, Mike did do a nice job, he provides you a couple of comments here as to what his concerns are. As he said, it is mostly residential, um, and also, he would want to have some fences up, and be concerned about lighting in the hours of operation. Um, this is the narrative that we received, so I don't have much more to go on. Um, and in the next page, um, and, uh, is, you'll see that that's the building that they're proposing, um, next page. Um, side view, in the next page.
How big is this?
Um.
So I, in my mind, I was thinking more of like a U-Haul-type storage facility, where people would rent out lockers. Is that, I don't thi- is, this is a-
I don't believe that to be-
A small warehouse with bays.
Correct, and my, and it would, and again, we haven't seen the full narrative.
Yeah.
The assumption is they would have outside storage capabilities as well. Um, again, I don't know what that means. Um again, I don't know what that means, because you see what I see. So until it got to the ZBA, um they haven't provided a full narrative. If, if they did, I'm, I'm unaware of it. But according to this, it's a hundred feet by sixty feet, so um, you know, sixteen hundred feet.
Six thousand.
Sixteen thousand feet, square feet.
Wait, a hundred by sixty?
Hundred by sixty, sixteen thousand.
Six thousand.
Yeah, six thousand, right, six thousand. And then, um, can I go more? Okay, and then
I mean, that's not huge, that's.
and then this here, I just Google Earth it, so that way you could see exactly where it is. It's a little bit dark, sorry, but um you could see that it's mostly undeveloped land. Um all of those on that side are residential homes. There's a couple of residential homes directly across. Now, as you travel a little north and a little south, you'll see that you do get more into a commercial area. I mean, there's the restaurant and, and the others. Um but this one is a little tough, and it's, it's, it is residential.
So my issue is there's, there's not much in the narrative. There's nothing about our hours of operation. They've only given us a picture of the building. They've not talked about outside storage at all. And we've had negative experiences with contractor's storage yard. Bringing in um height of material being stored, bringing in material they weren't allowed to bring in. So that there's really not enough information here, but this is not something I'm in favor of at that location.
I mean, my thought is it's properly zoned, who are we to say you can't do it? I mean, we can't, we literally can't.
Right.
We're making recommendations to the planning board.
But my recommendation, right, right.
But I guess who is the town who is the planning board to say you can't do it just because we don't like it there?
Yeah.
It's properly zoned, properly owned. I don't know, it's not massive, it's, I don't know, I'd guess the size of the DPW building.
It just, it, they didn't provide enough information. That's my, there's no hours of operation listed. Uh contractor's storage yards are allowed to have outside storage. They not explained that at all. There's nothing in here for it.
Right.
So and, and again, all it says is contractors' office and storage yards screened from abutting lots of exterior streets by a solid something, screen and/or fence. So I don't know if all the screening is going in because of the outdoor storage they planned to have or not.
Right. I'd be, I'd be comfortable with making a recommendation to the planning board that they limit hours um to something reasonable, like, you know, seven AM.
Um.
So that's all we can do right now, is just give recommendations or our suggestions to the planning board?
Yes.
Is that what?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's correct, so in the
So we can't say no.
Correct.
You can say you're not in favor of it.
Yeah, we can recommend a day.
So your zoning in the town of West Bridgewater for special permits, excuse me, for contractor's yards uh requires a second plan approval, pri- a special permit pr- approval through the zoning board of appeals. And as part of your bylaw, you have the ability to weigh in on comments, to forward comments to the ZBA, but the ZBA is the board that ultimately makes that decision.
So I, I would say if we're looking at limiting hours of operation, I would make it maybe nine to five, something like that would be my recommendation. Again, I don't know what their intention is. I can only speak to my experience with contractor's storage yard. Typically, there's large piles of rock, loam, um gravel, whatever. They're taking out big trucks in and out, you're in a residential.
No, that was occurring right there. I grew up right, um, couple houses down from there, and that did happen.
Hmm? Right. So. That absolutely did happen. Uh, so.
And that was specifically that location.
Well, it was a little bit further down from there.
Was it?
'Cause this was an empty, this was a foundation that was originally being built for storage.
That's right, the storage units.
It was a storage facility, storage units.
Mm-hmm.
And that blew up and went away.
'Cause all the residents fought it.
Yep, very much so.
Yep.
And then instead, they got a contractor's storage yard several years later. And, and again, you, now you have to start looking at restrictions on, okay, how high are these piles? What they can bring in? If they're going to be storing loam, sand, gravel outside, what's the dust mitigation?
Mm-hmm.
You know, you, you get into all of that, and I, again, I can only talk to what I know a contractor's storage yard has, because their narrative is uh insufficient. If they had said there was not going to be any outside storage, then, okay, we're looking at a building and that looks like where they're going to do their storage. But if it's gonna be a contractor's storage yard surrounded by residents, I would say nine to five hours of operation. If they're going to have outside storage, they're going to need to have dust mitigation. Um.
So I, I'd be comfortable with, that they do have the ability on the special department to say no outside storage.
Storage base. Mm-huh.
I'd go with that recommendation.
I like that.
Okay.
No outside storage.
I'd agree to that. I agree with that. Um hours of operation.
Lights, sound, be mindful of the residents, of course.
So I think Mike has in there about light shielding, um light shields, yeah.
Oh, good.
So hours of operation, nine to five, sound reasonable?
For a construction yard, aren't they usually?
I think nine's a little late.
Yeah.
Hmm.
They're usually up and out in seven or eight.
So if there's no outside storage, then I would say, yeah, s- eight o'clock?
Seven.
Seven o'clock?
Seven.
Okay, seven, huh.
Um, anything else? You got those, David?
I do.
Alright, is there a um motion to pass along those comments?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Alright. Um, Outfront Media has an eighth amendment. Um, same thing, I'm assuming?
Same thing, but the positive is, is that the ZBA in March did approve the billboard now. So as a result, we will now move to closing. Um this had expired in March, that's why you have to do it. But part of the, part of the conversation I had with them is I wanna close by the end of June, so that way, whatever we get in for cash will be certified for next year. So with that said, this should be our last one.
Alright, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, vote to award contract to Palmeroy Associates, uh the new transfer station building?
So I place this on the agenda because I'm never sure. There's some little particulars that I'm, bottom line is, is that we went to town meeting a few years ago and we received funding to be able to put a transfer station building. And uh we never did it, because as soon as we, we approved it, costs skyrocketed. We couldn't afford it, and rather than go back to the town looking for more money, we shelved it. Pricing has started to come down, which is a positive. Palmeroy is our owners' project manager, OPM. Normally, because town meeting has already approved it, um I would just sign the contract. But we did this as a debt agreement at town meeting. And I just said, you know what, if I have you vote to award it, then I'll sign it. At least that way, there's never any questions about it. But bottom line is, we'd like to start the process of going out to bid. So I'm asking you to approve the contract upon what you associates has presented.
What was the amount that we voted on at town meeting?
Four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. He's not receiving, no, he's only receiving thirty thousand dollars, and so he'll do his job.
Right.
The rest is all for construction and design.
Alright.
And there's enough money now? We've
Well, we'll go out to bid, but based on what we're seeing for, uh, we've done some requests for quotes,
Mm-hmm.
which means it doesn't lock you in, it just gets you some information.
Right.
But based on what I'm being led to believe, some of those quotes have come down from what they were before. So we're hoping now we're going to be able to afford it.
It's crazy, for a hundred and ten thousand dollar building, the rest of these costs, when you look at it.
It's a PortaKing?
This is one of the buildings that was priced out. It, it's still a two-story.
Oh, I thought it was a porta potty.
Oh, no.
It was, sorry.
No.
For a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
I knew what they were looking at, that's why I was questioning.
That's the crown jewel.
I bet that is.
Um, yeah, that, that's, I mean, I see the septic work, it's forty thousand.
Oh, that's where you got the hundred and ten thousand?
Yeah, I'm just, yeah. It's a hundred and ten thousand dollar building with a hundred thousand dollars worth of, worth of site work.
Five percent of the construction cost for escalation.
So right now, you're just awarding it for Palmeroy, um which is basically number nine and number ten, the owners' project manager portion of it. And then that company, they won't go out to bid, even though we have some pre-estimates, we still have to bid out all the work. These numbers are going to change. Except from them, we know PortaKing's gonna quote us a hundred and ten. Um so whether or not somebody else will quote higher or lower, and of course, they could always amend their quote as well. Um but this allows us to be able to build a budget.
Alright, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, vote to appoint Christopher Trudell to ADA committee. Marcia, you guys met with him, right?
Yes. Yep, we met with him. The board likes him, and he seemed to still wanna participate after the meeting was over. So I, I think that he may have had something else going on tonight and couldn't make it. But he seemed interested, he'd like to be appointed, and the board liked him, right? They asked him all their questions.
Yeah, he seems, he's um knowledgeable about um ADA requirements with buildings, 'cause he's a civilian.
Oh, great.
He's got some experience with ADA um requirements. He, he works mostly outdoors, um but he is familiar with the ADA laws and wants to participate. And we're always looking for volunteers, so that's how.
Great. Alright, is there a motion to make appointment?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And um vote to appoint Tim Hay to the conservation commission?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public comment period. Anyone?
Thank you.
So I di- I just have a question, actually. When we approved the budgets, Mary and I did not um recuse ourselves. But that's fine, because we were ta- we were voting on the overall budget. We weren't necessarily indicating
So I agree, 'cause you never had specific conversations, but if, if you both would like to just make a public statement, feel free to do so.
Okay. Yeah, so I, I think just for clarification, I will, the fact that I voted on the budgets was in their totality. And I had already previously recused myself from the, I think it's the salary line on the school's budget and the ADA committee's budget.
And I need to abstain from DPW salaries and benefits.
Alright, town administrator, your point?
Sure, basically, the first three are just FYIs, um typical stuff, just request for, for town used properties that I signed off on. The last one is a request from East Bridgewater. Um so we actually discussed this at a by-of-select meeting in twenty fifteen, specifically April twelfth. There is a CSX train that goes in on the West Bridgewater, East Bridgewater line, but it's technically on the West Bridgewater side. Um and there is a provision to create a quiet zone. As you know, right now, they, they sound their horn. You can hear it where I live. Um I hear the horns from, from a train in that area as well at night. Those are all strictly required from the federal government. However, in April, I mean, in um August of twenty fifteen, as a result of West Bridgewater residents, this board called in representatives from both CSX um train and also from the Railroad Association, our regional rep from Boston. They were nice, they came in, they explained the process. We could create a quiet zone, um which means that they would not blow their horns, or they would blow their horns less frequently. Uh it would require some engineering. You would also put up some quad gates. You would petition the federal government. And at that time, um we were informed it would cost about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of what we would have to spend. The board declined that option at that point. Um as you can see, um in here, uh the, uh, maybe it was in the email. Um but East Bridgewater has said that they will not participate in the expense. Uh they would just ask West Bridgewater to do it. Um and again, if it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, in twenty fifteen, I'm sure it's probably double that now. So um, there's no doubt that this is not great or convenient, because again, I hear it at my house as well, um and so it's frustrating. But I'd hate to cut the school department budget and then install gates. But that's just my personal opinion, so whatever. At this point, I can let the board of East Bridgewater know that we reviewed it and there's no further action at this point, unless you feel otherwise.
Alright, um just to note, we are not cutting the school budget, we are increasing it nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Yes.
Um, yeah, I agree though.
I agree.
Okay. That's my report.
Alright, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Where are you, Jerry?